You're on, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to order. If you would, bow with me for the invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for another beautiful day in Greenville County. I pray right now that you be with anyone who's still traveling here to come be a part of business, safe travel, as well as when we leave this place as well. I pray that you be with the meeting tonight, help our focus, help our decision-making, and help every citizen in Greenville County that's here to listen and to give their input to us as well. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can be seated. Next on the agenda, we have Approval of Minutes.
We've approved of the minutes.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We'll go to Proclamations and Special Recognitions, and I will recognize Counselor Farmer, who will be honoring the 100th Anniversary of Greenville First Assembly of God.
Whereas Greenville First Assembly of God was founded in 1925 and for the past 100 years has been a steadfast pillar of faith, service, and community in Greenville County. And whereas through its commitment to outreach, compassion ministries, civic engagement, Greenville Assembly, or sorry, Greenville First Assembly has provided vital support to individuals and families in need, offering food, assistance, education, mentorship, and hope to countless lives. And whereas, the Church has been an unwavering partner in strengthening Greenville through its charitable initiatives, including partnerships with humanitarian organizations, special needs advocacy, disaster relief, and youth development programs. And whereas Greenville First Assembly has fostered a spirit of unity and inclusion, welcoming generations of worshippers, investing in the next generation, and adapting to meet the evolving needs of our diverse and growing community. And whereas, on the occasion of its centennial anniversary, it's fitting that Greenville County Council now recognizes this historic milestone and commend the Church for last, for its lasting impact on the upstate region. Now therefore, be it resolved that Greenville County Council does hereby recognize and honor Greenville First Assembly of God on the occasion of its 100th anniversary, expressing the deepest gratitude for its century of faith, service, and dedication of well-being of our community.
Next up, we have Special Appearances, and I'll go ahead and ask real quick, just so I can make sure, is Ms. Arlie Screen with us today? Hey, Ms. Green, come on up. Ms. Green is going to be sharing about the SBA, they're reopening the deadlines for physical damage loss. This has to do with Hurricane Helene, and had the honor of speaking with her last week, and she's eager to come share with some news for people who are still seeking some relief. So please address us and listen.
Thank you. Again, my name is Arlie Screen. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience of the U.S. Small Business Administration. And yes, we are reopening the deadline, well, we are extending the deadline to apply for physical damages to April 27, 2025. Now homeowners and renters are eligible to apply if they have physical damages. We have another program for businesses and nonprofits. This is called Economic Injury. Now with this program, it does necessarily have to have any damages. The damages comes in loss of revenue. So if they will look back at the time, this time last year, and their revenue was higher, then that's an injury. A lot of businesses think, oh, I didn't have any physical damages, I didn't get affected. But sometimes it takes six months to over a year before they know they were even infected or impacted by this injury. I asked the board that you would, I sent a digital email with attachments. I asked that you would please post it on all platforms, so we can try to get the help to the survivors that still need to get resources in order to recovery from Hurricane Helena. Again, thank you for letting me come and present this program that we have available. At this time, I will open the floor for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Greens. Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much for presenting, and I'll make sure that we get that passed around to all council members as well.
Okay. Someone asked me for the phone number. It's 1-800-659-2955, or you can visit the website, sba.gov/disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, very much.
Okay.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have Appearances. And Jessica, we have any speakers for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Ed Paxton. His item is 9A, Initiate Zoning Text Amendment.
All right. Mr. Paxton? You look spiffy this evening.
I'd go by the pawn shop and get a little money. I'm speaking tonight to item 7A, because I'd really like to hear what makes Paris Mountain environmentally sensitive, which the remainder of this earth that we live on doesn't have some of the other from time to time. For the record, I do own some of that hill. Some of it's flat, some of it's steep. I don't know how much he is of it, because I've never been willing to pay the price to have it surveyed. But I know we got deer and bear on the mountain, and I'm all for protecting that and not developing Just for the record, I'm nearly 90 years old, and I'm willing to be proposed if somebody wants to take it and do something with it meaningfully, pay taxes on it for a while, and I predict they like tax-free exchanges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. What is that? I'm not sure what that, I thought that was me just hearing something at first, just making sure. Thank you, Mr. Paxton. All right. Next up, we are moving to Public Hearings. The first one is A, and I will introduce Counselor Collins for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 8A, Augusta Grove Ten Investors LLC, formerly Project Firehouse Fee in lieu Tax Agreement. This public hearing is held before the purpose, for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Augusta Grove Ten Investors LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers for this item?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item B. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 8B, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Cone Mill Acquisition Group LLC, formerly Project Ott. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of the First Amendment to that certain agreement for development of a joint county industrial and business park by the and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Anderson County, South Carolina, Cone Mills Acquisition Group LLC, and other matters related thereto.
Thank you. And do we have any speakers for this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item 9, the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tripp?
Before we adopt this, someone just kind of, I wasn't able to read through it, but the zoning text amendment.
Can't hear you.
Sorry about that. What's the, I've never seen a text amendment come through the consent agenda. What's exactly is in that?
This is the, was the initiation, but this is the language where we, we struck the entire paragraph from the, from the ordinance in reference to the environmentally protected area for Paris Mountain, I believe is, was the conversation when we adopted this and we discussed it.
Is this the resolution that we did two weeks ago?
No, it's an actual, it's a text amendment to a, to the zoning ordinance concerning the special district, the environment of.
I'm not opposed to this at this point, I just would like to have a little further discussion. Can we pull that off?
Sure.
If I may just, before pulling off, the Counselor Tripp, maybe Mr. Anley can explain it different. This is the one I had brought as a text amendment, and I brought it as a council member, and it went to PND, and it was passed by PND. And then, I thought it'd be second reading here, but apparently the PND or staff must initiate, then it goes through first, this is basically first reading, not, no.
I'm happy to step in a little bit, because it is kind of wonky under our zoning ordinance, but what's happened thus far is because this was a council-initiated text amendment to the zoning ordinance, it, we had the committee rule, so it had to go down to committee for the initiation, and so we still haven't initiated it, or the council as a body has not. So it went down to committee, PND has pushed it back out with a recommendation that it be initiated, and it's now on the floor just for the initiation. The next step will be, if it's initiated, it'll go through the normal zoning ordinance process, zoning public hearing, first reading, second reading.
Okay. That's good. I'm fine. I'll withdraw, withdraw my request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman, the two counselors are not here. Are they on Zoom, or do we, don't we, we have a little heightened?
We do have Counselor McGahey on Zoom. I do know that, even though we can't see him. I do not believe we have Counselor Russo. The next item is 10 Resolutions, A, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 10A, R.A. Greenville Brookfield Road LLC Consent to Partial Assignment on Assumption of Fee I move for adoption of the resolution approving the partial assignment of interest in the fee in lieu of tax and special source credit between Greenville County, South Carolina, and R.A. Greenville Brookfield Road LLC dated as of December 6, 2022, with an effective date as of December 1, 1998, revised as of December 1, 2000.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next is item 11, ordinances at third reading. We'll go with A, Counselor Farmer.
Item 11A, requirement to stream to public, all county council and standing committee meetings. I move for adoption at third reading, an ordinance to require transparency for all Greenville County council and committee meetings and streaming meetings to the public.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? When no, the ayes have it. Next item is 12, ordinances at second reading, A with Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item CZ 2025-009, property located at 40 Old Augusta Road extension, requiring, requesting rezoning from R M 20 to S 1. The planning commission and the committee recommend approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Any discussion on the motion?
Quick question on, is this a, are they going to develop some of this property, or?
It's the old fire station in, on, behind McDonald's in Moonville. So they're selling it.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Bradley, CZ 010.
Yes, sir. CZ 205-25-010, property located, property located at 9 Springdale Springside Avenue, requesting rezoning from R 7.5 to R 6. The planning commission and the committee recommend approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Go to B, Augusta Grove Ten Investors LLC, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 12B, Augusta Grove Ten Investors LLC, formerly Project Firehouse Fee in lieu of tax agreement. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Augusta Grove Ten Investors LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in fee of lieu of taxes to the matters related thereto.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Go to C, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 12C, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Cone Mills Acquisition Group LLC, formerly Project Ott. I move for approval at the second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of the First Amendment to that certain agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Anderson, South Carolina, Cone Mills Acquisition Groups LLC, and other matters related to. And the amendment is, I move to amend the ordinance and agreement to reflect the redline changes outlined in the documents that were included in the council agenda packet.
All right. And just to verify, we are taking two, two, two different votes on this one. Thank you. Any question on the item? On the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Counselor McGahey.
Yeah, Mr. Anley, could you add, do we normally give 60-year, 30-year extensions? Is that a normal occurrence for these? As I knew on council here, because we're going to extend this to 60 years, is that something that always?
He was asking if, if it's typical to extend it to 60 years.
We've done a little research on that, Mr. McGahey, and we have not seen one that's been out to 60 years, but I think I need to point out that this was originally a SSRC agreement between Greenville County and this group, and it was originally says in the agreement 60 years, so when it was, when it was adopted back in '21 or '22, I can't remember which year, I think it was '21, maybe '22, excuse me, it was adopted as 60 years, and then for some reason, the actual park agreement that's between the counties, it just, I think because it's just said it over and over and over, it said 30 years. It just didn't line up, but we had already agreed, and the body had agreed to the 60 years. But no, so that, all this is, is a cleanup of just getting the park agreement to align with the actual SSRC agreement, because the two are meant to speak together, and it was close to a scripter's area, it was just overlooked back in '22. But to answer your question, 60 years, this is as long a one as we've been able to find.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Counselor Collins?
Yes, we did bring these questions up in Finance Committee, and we did ask the attorney, and because those were some of our same questions and concerns, and 60 years is a long time, but the initial agreement was in the language of 60 years, so, and Anderson County had already approved that extension, so those questions were addressed, and as a committee, we agreed to such.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will move on to ordinances at first reading. Zoning ordinances, I'll give all these to Counselor Bradley at once.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present for first reading zoning dockets CZ 2025-014 through CZ 2025-20, 020.
Thank you.
And? They're standing on the floor, going to committee.
Right. We will refer these to the Planning and Development Committee. Item on the agenda under 13 is B, Establishment of a Firearms Sign Policy for Greenville County Properties or Facilities. Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noticed on the county council agenda, I present for first reading and ordinance, establishing a Greenville County policy directing all Greenville County administrators and staff regarding signs, posters, bulletin boards, memorandum, and/or administrative policies or directives regarding firearms on Greenville County properties or facilities. I will mention too, this will need an amendment about, for special events, parades and stuff, there is a statutory cutout where there's signs, there's temporary signs, so I intend to amend that at the appropriate time. I ask that you send this to public safety.
All right. We will refer this to public safety. Is C, Greenville County Land Development Regulations Amendment, Design Standards, Counselor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noticed on the county council agenda, I present for first reading and ordinance amending Section 10.3 Design Standards of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations to require new business, office, mercantile, assembly, which is gathering, educational, or storage uses, structures, or developments be designed and constructed compatible with the surrounding area and conform with the unique character and architectural high points of surrounding buildings. I request that be referred to PND.
Counselor Shaw, we will refer this to Planning and Development Committee. One is D, Greenville County Budget Amendment to provide for the construction, maintenance, repair, and capacity enlargement of roads and intersections within the bounds of Greenville County. Counselor Shaw and/or Counselor Collins.
I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville County Budget Amendment to provide for the construction, maintenance, repair, and capacity enlargement of roads and intersections within the bounds of Greenville County. An ordinance amended Article 5, Division 1, Section 7-61 of the Greenville County ordinance to provide that the budget policy provide no less than 10% of gross annual revenues be budgeted for the construction, maintenance, repair, and capacity enlargement of roads and intersections within the bounds of Greenville County for use by private or for higher motor vehicles.
Thank you, Counselor. I will refer this to the, Counselor Tripp.
He didn't request specifically where that goes. Since this is changing budget policy, which the budget has always gone to the body as a whole, I'd request that you send it to committee of the whole.
I have no problem with that. We will refer this to committee of the whole.
Thank you.
There are no committee reports, so we will move to the next agenda item, which is Public Comments, and I will have, we have quite a few of these tonight, so if everybody's comfortable and ready to sit in and listen, we'll let Jessica start the names, and if you would, when you come forward, you just have to give us your name, not to do your address and date of birth and first of kin and all that other stuff anymore.
Chairman, the first five speakers are Sonny Cole, Steve Cole, Myron Joubian, Jenny Trump, and Michelle Slade.
Thank you. And if, if, if your names caught out, and those five just come up and kind of get in the line behind the podium, and we'll listen as you take your turns. Mr. Cole?
Am I ready?
Yes, sir.
Thanks to the board for letting us speak today. This is regarding 17A on Greater Greenville Sanitation. Just going to read off what I have. I have been, I've been serviced by Greater Greenville for 22 years. I come to work for them 14 months ago. I did not realize how much they do and how hard the men and women that work for Greater Greenville. Summer up at midnight to start their shifts. If overtime is necessary, then they do it until the job is done. These men and women need this job. Many live paycheck to paycheck, and some of the foremen will loan them money just to make it to the next check. City of Greenville don't need to take these jobs from them. What will they do without the jobs? City of Greenville don't need the money. Greater Greenville Sanitation employees do need the money. I hope that you will consider letting Greater Greenville continue to expand and grow as Greenville County grows. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
I don't know if I told you my name is Sonny Cole or not.
Got it now. Thank you very much.
Evening, Chairman Blount County Council. My name is Steve Cole. I'm the Executive Director at Greater Greenville Sanitation. I'm here tonight to speak about the resolution for support of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District. Greater Greenville currently employs 114 active full-time employees who work hard to provide household waste, bulk waste, and yard waste services to approximately 60,000 residents in the Greenville area and provide backdoor service to persons with disabilities. As you are aware by now, some state legislators have introduced and are supporting two bills. H 4003 is a bill that purports to restrict operations of Greater Greenville, including prohibiting the building and operation of a transfer station on Greater Greenville property on Highway 124. H 4002, purpose to dissolve Greater Greenville in its entirety and put trash, yard waste, and bulk waste service at risk for residents and customers we serve. This issue really began with Greater Greenville's proposal to build a transfer station. As many of you know, Greater Greenville has been working to develop a new operations and maintenance facility on Highway 124 for almost five years. Our current facilities are in a high-traffic area, and we have no room for expansion. After the initial design stage, we decided to add a transfer station on the property and received approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals for the operations and administration facility, including the transfer station. Subsequently, Republic Services and the National Waste and Recycling Association appealed the decision of the BZI to allow the transfer station. I would like to point out that up until August of 2022, Greater Greenville Sanitation used a public service transfer station on Malden Road at a cost of close to $2 million per year and another $500,000 to Twin Chimneys Landfield. We terminated our contract with the Republic in accordance with the terms of the agreement. Upon termination of contract, Greater Greenville began the process of delivering waste to Greenville County's Twin Chimneys Landfield. Greater Greenville travels a much greater distance to haul waste, but it also means that Greater Greenville has been paying approximately $1.6 million per year to Greenville County in tipping fees. This is revenue that Greenville County stands to lose if Greater Greenville is dissolved. The appeals were ultimately dismissed, and the BZI's decision was upheld. South Carolina Department of Environmental Services granted the permit for the transfer station in September of 2024. After successfully obtaining the transfer station permit, council approved the GO bond request for $20 million. Republic Services spoke at that meeting in opposition. Now, less than two months after the approval of the GO bond, Republic Services and other private haulers are working to eliminate Greater Greenville Sanitation altogether. If Greater Greenville Sanitation is dissolved, our 114 employees will lose their job and benefits as a result, and I believe the majority of the district's customers will see higher costs and a reduction in service. The cost will most likely increase for those in lower-income areas and lower costs for those in the more affluent areas, and eliminate services for those with disabilities. I ask you to please consider the employees and their families when this resolution comes up for a vote, as well as the potential loss of services to the people of the Greater Greenville Sanitation. Sanitation District that have had our services since 1968. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
My name is Myron Sorbion. I'm at 248 Earl Drive. I've lived there for forty-five years, and I've enjoyed the services of the sanitation department even this morning at seven o'clock in the morning. I appreciate what they do. It wasn't until the devastating news of the transfer station, which is actually taking place almost in my backyard, that I actually got involved with the sanitation issue. But I now oppose all of that for a different reason. I didn't know, never thought of me to deal with the politics of sanitation. And as a result, I was challenged to go to the board meetings, and I've been to five of the last six board meetings. And I simply wanted to tell you what I discovered at that time. The General Secretary, the Assistant to Steve, she's here, I don't know her name, she does a fantastic job. I can't believe how detailed she is. When it comes to the Board of Commissioners, they've got the heart of the services there. When it comes to Steve Cole, you can't ask for a better director. He's knowledgeable, he's intelligent, he's dedicated, and he wanted me to say he's handsome as well. Okay? So, why would I appear, why would it appear that everything goes with, Greenville Sanitation recognizes the greatness of everyone else? And I'm going to tell you, that's the problem. They're all patting each other on the back. They're great people, but nobody's questioning what they're doing. You're not questioning them, they're not questioning themselves. I witnessed at one point three-quarters of a million dollars in new tractors and equipment, I'm going off the memory here, okay? There wasn't one bit of discussion. No one even asked where they were buying the equipment from. No one asked if there were competitive bidding. Folks, that's wrong. That should be taking place on a regular basis. When, I witnessed three new pickup trucks authorized without any discussion. They were thirty-some thousand dollars a piece, and again, I'm going on memory, Steve will correct me if I'm wrong, okay? No one asked about any of that. The system has worked smoothly for years without any notices, that the whole system is off-kilter, and no one's noticed it. So, this resolution, as I see it, does not address problems. It merely whitewashes the problems that have come under scrutiny by state legislators. And I'm asking that council form a committee of both council members, sanitation members, and the public, and address the concerns that have now come up and risen to the surface of what's wrong. We need the sanitation department. They are great people, wonderful people, but we've got problems. And you don't solve problems by just having a resolution that says everything's great. We need to fix the problems that have come to light. Thank you ever so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, County Council. I'm Jenny Trump, and I'm here on behalf of our community. So, I want to thank you for your time and your service that you give to us, for all of the service that you do here in Greenville and throughout the whole counties. We recently had an experience where we realized that there's a bit of a loophole within the developers to bypass the zoning process by going directly to the Board of Zoning of Appeals. We've experienced this personally. This effectively rezones property without really proper review of undermining the zoning laws designed to protect Greenville County. Recently, we learned that a developer from Florida is under contract to purchase the land from Advent United Methodist Church off of Woodruff Road for a for-profit school unaffiliated with the church at all. As soon as this exemption is granted, they're going to transfer the property to a builder. Instead of following the rezoning processes, which we have in place, they are requesting a special exemption, a tactic used repeatedly in Greenville County and other counties, especially in our own state. Our experience as constituents has not been the greatest. We have had meeting times that are terrible. At three o'clock in the afternoon, people have to take off time to get there. There's been a lack of transparency. You cannot find the bylaws online for the zoning area of appeals. Limited response time as citizens, we have fifteen days, actually thirteen, in order to respond to an opposition, which is not enough to just barely read about it. We've heard over and over that this is a backdoor process, and it really needs to be looked at. It is an unbalanced process. It is in favor of developers. It is not in favor of Greenville County residents. And I am here to let you know that recently, we were told by the zoning area that there are only three things that can happen in a hearing, that they are opposed, deny, and postpone. This did not happen. It was a fourth thing that we never learned about and did not know, and it was called a hold. The hold was actually granted to this developer for an additional thirty days. The developer was not ready for the hearing, but yet they received an additional thirty days. My guess is, if we have citizens that asked for that same thing, we would have been denied that, because the system is set up for developers. I respectfully ask you to please take a second look at this appeals process. These special exemptions should not bypass the zoning laws. Community plans, such as the Five Forks Area Plan, is a great plan. We need to stick to plans that we have, or at least relook at them, that were just being completely thrown out. Bylaws and procedures, the holds that are granted should be publicly accessible. We should be able to see the application that these builders put in. We're not able to see that as citizens. We have to go through FOIA in order to do that, which takes a long time. That is our only thirteen days, so now we're really, really limited. These hearings need to be rescheduled at a time. I want to lastly say, we appreciate your service. Thank you very much, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm following on from Jenny Trump's message that she has for you. My name is Michelle Slade. I am a resident on English Oak Road in Stonehaven One neighborhood. I'm also currently serving as the Secretary of the HOA Board for Stonehaven One. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I relocated to Greenville four and a half years ago and spent a considerable amount of time deciding where I wanted to live. The Stonehaven neighborhood met all the criteria for me, a well-established, mature neighborhood, well-maintained homes, manicured landscaping, courteous residents, many of whom have been there since the inception. The neighborhood has a growing swim team, which has both served St. Stonehaven One and Stonehaven Two. Our homeowners are very respectful in the covenants of the HOA Board in any architectural changes to maintain our neighborhood look and feel. Many of our residents run, walk, walk their dogs several times a day, children play. We have no sidewalks in our neighborhood, so as you can imagine, they're on the roads. And there is only one main road through that neighborhood, that is English Oak Road. It joins onto Stonedale, Bobcat Trail, and to Route Forty, and it also joins onto Brown Road to get to Five Forks. If the zoning variance for Advent United Methodist Church and the current plan by the developer, Red Apple, for a nine-hundred-student charter score, if that goes ahead, the traffic will use Stonehaven One as a cutthroat. And they'll use this because the two exits from the church on the building plan creates a mandatory right turn only. The next right turn is Stonehaven One. They will come through that neighborhood, five to six hundred cars twice a day. That is not what this was designed for. Those cars on the plan, they have a traffic section, four cars abreast. Those cars are twenty feet away from the backyards of people on English Oak Road. Again, this is not how this neighborhood was ever intended to be. I'd like to add that the zoning board's special exception variance justification under Section 3.4, and I quote, "The authorization of a variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property or the public good, and the character of the district will not be harmed by the granting of this variance." This statement alone should justify denying that current exception request by Advent United Methodist Church and have a nine-hundred-student charter score built on this land. We're asking council to take under review the special exception variance that has been requested. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much.
If I could, before the next speaker, these two ladies bring up a good point, and just something for council to think about, we might should consider special exceptions, variances specifically for public schools and churches only, and that would eliminate this kind of thing happening, because I've gotten a lot of pushback about it. Nothing due tonight, but this brings it to the forefront again, and just something for us to think about going down the road, and it'd make it a lot less painful for us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just also want to mention, I mean, that's in my district, and I've gotten a lot of calls, and I try to be responsive, but I just want to make sure the public understands that we are not allowed to appear before the BZA Board and advocate on your behalf. That's, you know, according to the Ethics Commission, that's a conflict of interest for us. So, we hear you loud and clear, and if there's something that we can do, I'll be leading the charge on that. So, thank you for coming tonight. Just wanted you to know that.
Thank you. And that would be a good discussion we could put on Planning and Development to have that discussion Dr. Fant was talking about for future notice. Yeah, we'll get it on the agenda.
Yeah, I'll get back with you. Okay. We'll get it on there.
All right. Ms. Stone, we'll take the next five.
Mr. Chairman, the next five speakers are Mary Ann Coleman, Amy Sharp, Robert Chambers, David Davis, and Michael Chandler.
Thank you.
Give us your name. Point of information, Madam Clerk, just for processing, could you let me know how many, or let us know how many total speakers there are?
There are twenty-three in total.
Twenty-three, okay. So, we're five through ten on a twenty-three total.
Okay. I'm Mary Ann Coleman. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of Stonehaven. I live all the way back off of Five Forks Road, and all that drainage from that lot's going to come down English Oak to the lowest part, and I already have a river running through it, if you remember that movie. We're going to have a deluge. Anyway, I want to talk about how we have been working as neighbors, and Dan, you know, we started, in 2007, we started with the East Woodruff Road Plan, and we developed a policy guide to assist in decision-making and support future actions to promote waterly development of land in an effort to maintain and improve our quality of life. In 2018, members of our community requested that Greenville County Council and planning staff assist in creating a new plan, a new vision for the future of Five Forks. Hence, the Five Forks Area Plan in 2021 was birthed. It took us three years, fifty-seven pages, and serves to establish goals and recommendations for the community over the next ten years. So, we're still in that ten-year frame. And like the EREP, this plan will serve as a policy guide for future development in the Five Forks area. So, I just want to tell you who was involved in this plan. We had twenty residents from Five Forks that came religiously to the meetings. We had our council representatives, that was four people, and Dan Tripp was one of them. We had Greenville County Planning Commission. There were ten of those people. And then Greenville County staff. So, there were five of them. So, thirty-nine people in total to get this plan together. And so, what we're doing is imploring you to continue to follow all those hours that people put in, and apparently, we're still putting them in to deny, to deny a nine-hundred-child building that looks like a Toys R' Us building. They built one down in Myrtle Beach, and that's what they proposed, put on Woodruff Road with single-family homes, brick, basically, you know, high up in the six figures, and they're going to put a silly-looking building like that. Plus, the fact that they're putting four lanes of traffic that will butt up against the neighbors' backyards without any screening. We have been promised nothing. They've been very, very secretive, and that's not the way we, we're neighbors. So, we've always worked with our local churches. So, I'm asking you to stay with this Five Forks plan, because it'll save us all a lot of hardship. Thank you very much. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sharp?
Yes, I'm Amy Sharp, Speaker Number Seven, for the record. I just am here to talk about the proposed dissolution of Greater Greenville Sanitation. I, as a resident in District Nineteen since 2017, I've enjoyed their services, and frankly, I don't know why this is even an issue. With garbage pickup, leaf pickup, bulk pickup, I just can't imagine getting rid of Greater Greenville and having this go privatized, how they're going to do a better job. So, I really just wonder, this bill that got introduced just a little over a month ago, we're talking about it already, how is this going to benefit Greenville County by getting rid of Greater Greenville Sanitation? You know, currently, just on my street where I live, there's roughly twenty homes. So, right now, there's one truck that comes one day a week. If this is privatized, not only on my street neighborhood, the sixty thousand residents who are going to be having to buy private trash pickup, how many trucks are going to be added? And I just don't see what is better. So, I urge the council to consider that when they are seeing this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Mr. Chambers?
Hello. My name is Brian Chambers. I'm the Training Manager at Greater Greenville Sanitation, would like to speak on the subject of their resolution. I've been employed with Greater Greenville Sanitation since 2015. Greater Greenville Sanitation, as you've heard, provides a dedicated, dependable service to its clients that are second to none. When COVID hit, Greater Greenville Sanitation went to work. The private providers did not. When Hurricane Helene hit, Greater Greenville Sanitation showed up to work. The private carriers did not. And in 1968, prior to Greater Greenville Sanitation, those same private carriers or providers had the opportunity to remove waste from our district. They did not. Greater Greenville Sanitation showed up, have been there every single day. Since the appointment of Mr. Cole as our Director, Greater Greenville Sanitation, I promise you, has been a good steward of its taxpayers' dollars. We really look and value what they provide for us, and we try to give them the best that we can possibly give them. If Greater Greenville Sanitation is dissolved, it will have not only a devastating impact to its employees, but on the entire county, not just the district that Greater Greenville services. I encourage you to prayerfully consider supporting Greater Greenville Sanitation on this resolution. Thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Mr. Davis?
My name is David Davis. I just want to make it clear that we're not here to close down Greater Greenville Sanitation. We're here to get them more in line with the taxpayers. I think Greater Greenville does a great job, and I think I pay a fair price at my house. But I have spoken to Greater Greenville wrongful use of millage to fund this business to this county council, it's deaf ear for many years. We, as a neighborhood and individuals, were always told by county council that they have no power over GGS, as it is a state special tax district. No other county in the state of South Carolina, North Carolina, or even Florida tie garbage to millage. What millage does is disguise charges that we pay, that we all pay. At my home, I pay right at $300 for service, but yet, some of my neighbors a couple miles away from me pay over $2,000 for the same service. Garbage is garbage, mine or yours. Stop the millage, go to a fair fee cost for all, and attach those charges to the water bill like the City of Greenville does. Greater Greenville does not have to go away, but operate within the parameters of the state legislature that set up in 1986 as a fair rate for all. Transparency in government seems to be a topic in every newscast in 2025. To save you and me unfair tax dollars, Greater Greenville Sanitation is an amazing example of this. Stop this resolution and allow the state legislature to fix Greenville County's problem they have chosen to ignore for too many years. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chandler?
I would like to thank the committee for allowing me to speak. I got off from work this afternoon, and my wife said, "We've got to go to council, Chandler." I said, "For what?" She said, "They're going to cut off our trash." I said, "The waste management." I said, "Really?" And I'm here, I just wrote a few notes here. But I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak. And this is going to really affect everyone in our community. Not only our community, but it's going to affect the people with low income. How are they going to pay when they barely can pay their grocery bill? How are they going to pay for a private, private pickup? How are they going to send his children to school when they barely can eat, have enough to eat in the morning times? Now, I've lived at Maxi Avenue for over 42 years, and I've had no problem at all with the pickup for the Greater Greenville County Waste Management. So, I'm saying that we're going to be really making a big mistake if we get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stone, we're ready for our next five?
Mr. Chairman, your next five speakers are Ed Paxton, Norman Francis, Asia Johnson, Bruce Wilson, and Frances Bishop.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton?
Good evening again. I see this Greater Greenville Sanitation item as written, as written, to be slapped full of codswallop in mendacity. And an item, and an attempt to cover up a very sadly mismanaged commission, which nobody sponsors, nobody monitors. The workmen who work do a good job, but it starts because the commission, and this is statewide in government, nobody looks at these commissions. It's the heart of corruption in South Carolina. I recommend that this item be withdrawn, and I see participation in the matter to be a conflict of interest with Greater Greenville Sanitation's input. And I see Steve Cole's comments to be an attempt to boost his career rather than serve the customers of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, and to deflect knowledge of the continued mismanagement at Greater Greenville. Come to some of these meetings. I don't think I've ever seen one of you there. Yet, you all appoint them. I sometimes think it's numnuts appointing numnuts because the people you appoint don't bring anything to the table This transfer, which Mr. Cole wants to build, is not economically feasible. No feasibility has ever been presented to the public for review, yet we're the people that's being said is going to pay for it. It started off being $10 million, and then 20, and then 30. Boy, I'd like some of that budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Mr. Francis?
Don't mean to correct anybody, but it's not Mr. Francis, it's Norman Chandler. Francis is my middle name.
Got you. Sorry. Correct it.
I'm here to speak on behalf of really the residents and the business. Because when you look at this from a fairness standpoint, and that's what my remarks are going to really lend to, I ask that you consider how Greater Greenville Sanitation is funded. Residential customers can pay from a range of hundreds of dollars to thousands of dollars for the exact same service. Is that fair? Two-apartment complexes, as an example, in the district pay in excess of $130,000 a year. Greater Greenville does not roll a truck on the property. Is that fair? The original purpose of the district in 1957, when I was in the 10th grade at Parker High School playing football, had merit. It was needed. Today, it's not. And I ask that you not do your resolution. I thank you very much, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. Ms. Johnson?
Hi, my name is Asia Johnson. I'm here to speak about public transit. I wanted to first thank you all for the tremendous opportunity to be able to speak and all the work that you do to make our city amazing. Public transit, as far as cutting the budget, instead of leveraging dollars that we need, a city is only as great as the ability it takes to connect its citizens, and that's what public transit does. Also, some of our major workers, employers, like the airport, BMW, Michelin, Amazon, all have shortages currently because people that live in the city cannot get to those jobs. And public transit, if we were to have public transit to our airport, introduce a Greenville Park ride-and-fly, where they would park downtown, take public transit to the airport, that would then leverage the ability to not crowd on the parking would be amazing. But just me and myself, how public transit has impacted me is I was hit by an alleged drunk driver. I did not have the confidence to drive for a while, was not able to drive for a while. And I know everyone in this room may have been affected by traffic or being hit by someone at some point. And public transit restored my ability to be able to trust, to get back on the road again, until I could drive. And so, that's something that we need to really seat into because it connects not only, you know, the workers, it connects those that are disabled, it connects those that may not have anywhere to be able to afford getting to the places that they need, like the hospitals, like our seniors, like our disabled. And so, I just wanted to give you some knowledge on how we could public, we could better make our public transit if we gave them the funding and the dollars that they needed instead of possibly cutting. And then employers also, what's the first question that they ask is, "Are you available Saturday and Sunday?" Because public transit does not have the dollars that they need currently to operate, that's not a service right now that they can provide. But I implore the council that they would rethink and give more dollars to public transit. It would better connect to all of our citizens. And then, if I may, for the sanitation, I just want to say thank you because there were times where I was sick and I couldn't reach my trash can, and someone came and they pulled it. And having, you know, working that same route, and the amazing job you guys did, and then also during Hurricane Helene, tremendous, I just wanted to take the time and say thank you. Thank you, everybody, for their time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Bishop?
Thank you. My name is Frances Bishop. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to say something on behalf of Greater Greenville Sanitation District. I want to speak in support of them. I'm speaking basically from personal experience. I lived in another community where I had an opportunity to vote for or against privatizing sanitation. And I made the decision not to vote because I really didn't care. I said, "I don't care who picks up my garbage, as long as it gets picked up and I don't get charged more for the service." Well, it wasn't three months after they privatized it that I regretted it. I was not getting the same service I had gotten before. It became more cumbersome just to get your garbage picked up. They had all kinds of rules and regulations. Private companies are in it to make money, and as a result of that, they will frequently cut corners in order to do that. And services that you are accustomed to getting will no longer exist because of those cost-cutting corners. So, I implore you, if you enjoy the services that you're getting, that you support those services. Nothing is perfect. If they've got issues, then we need to work out trying to resolve them and not throw the baby out with the bear. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Mr. Wilson, I know that it was in reverse order, but I knew you wouldn't mind letting her go first.
Oh, no, no, of course not, Chairman. My name is Bruce Wilson. Mr. Chairman, I'm not here to talk about transfer stations or management when it comes to Greater Greenville. I'm here to talk about a workforce that I helped establish, and I'm here to talk about a community that I love dearly. There's a bill down in Columbia now that will dissolve Greater Greenville Sanitation. That's important to me. I, earlier today, sent out a letter, and I believe the chairman was copied on that letter to Senator Cora Allen regarding that bill. Up until this point, from what I understand, the bill was headed or is in the Senate, and it was uncontested and was about to be approved. Senator Allen just informed me today that he did contest the bill and had another senator to join him, but they're going to need some help, and that's why I'm here. I'm unique in this, Mr. Chairman, is that not only being a voice for the community, I'm also a former manager of Greater Greenville Sanitation, and I live in a district that is served by Greater Greenville Sanitation. I live in District 25, Councilman Fant's district. District 25 is the largest portion of the service district within Greater Greenville. District 25. The unique thing about District 25 is that we have a host of seniors in our district that would not be able to afford a private company. They're on fixed income. And Mr. Fant can correct me, I believe that the medium income in our district is probably around $40,000.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. We could not afford, no way to pay for private service. It would not work. Private services also does not offer yard waste pickup. In fact, the current yard waste that you see now is one that I helped develop several, I guess about 15 years ago. Private companies don't do that. We see how much destruction with the trees that were down through the last hurricane. Just imagine seeing that same type a year from now if we go to private because it won't get picked up. Mr. Chairman, I know that we are probably on the opposite end of the political spectrum, but I also know that doing the right thing is not politicized. It's always good to do the right thing. And so, I appreciate this resolution, but I also know that this council has a mega voice. You may not can vote in the legislature, but you can speak to them in a way that I cannot. And Mr. Tripp, I know that you can speak well. I would implore you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just real, real quick, before Ms. Stone continues, we do only have 30 minutes allotted for this time, but I've always said this, ever since I was selected to be Chair, I would do my best to make sure every voice was heard. And with the nature of what's going on, and honestly, the severity of how fast it could happen, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. So, we're going to continue. So, hopefully, everybody's behinds are nice and comfortable, and we'll get through this together. So, Ms. Stone, if you give us the next five?
Mr. Chairman, the next five speakers are Kenneth Baxter, Yvonne Reader, Megan Brock, Brian Kayen, and Daniel Rumfelt.
Thank you. Mr. Baxter?
Good evening. Kenneth Baxter, I reside in District 25. And when we found out today that there was going to be a meeting, a county council, to talk about the dissolving of Greater Greenville Sanitation, I straightened up my computer, made a little flag, and sent it out to all of my neighbors, and I didn't expect to get the response that I got back from them. My cell phone was running hot. The neighbor was asking me, "What is going on? Why would you want to fix something that's not broken?" And I told them, "I have no idea." But we have such a great rapport with the Greenville Sanitation Company in our neighborhood, and I'm worried that over 60,000 maybe homes could be affected by this. And I worry that having all of those companies deciding that I can do the job that Greenville Sanitation does, and I'm worried everybody with a pickup truck is going to be trying to pick up trash. I thought about the same thing happened when I worked for AT&amp;T, which is one phone company, and we decided, "No, we can do it better with 100 phone companies." And it was total chaos. And I think this is going to be chaos here, too, if we decide to do this and go privatize. And it's going to be price gouging, price setting, and some people are probably going to be hurt from this. And I implore you not to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [applause]. Next, we have Ms. Reader.
Good evening. My name's Yvonne Reader and own property in District 25. And I just want to say, someone mentioned earlier that the people who are in the higher tax brackets are paying more for their sanitation pickup than the people in the lower tax bracket. Well, people who live in those type homes can afford to pay a little bit more for their trash to be picked up. When you look at your tax statements, you're taxed more for your hospital also. You're taxed more for your school district also. But you're not talking about changing the schools or leveling that up or making everybody pay the same taxes on schools. So, I think it's just logical that you look at sanitation the same way. If you're fortunate to make more money and to enjoy a better life, then why not share it with those who are less fortunate and have no way of reaching the status that you have accomplished and achieved? It says integrity is when you do what is right when no one's looking. And I think all of us would like to feel that we are people of integrity, no matter what color you are, no matter what socioeconomic level you're on. If you have integrity, you're not going to be selfish and say, "Because I pay more, I want them to pay more." Life is not fair, never has been, never will be. My dad taught me that at a young age. He said, "But what is fair is that you treat everybody fairly. It's your personal responsibility to look after your fellow man. And if you're capable, then it's your responsibility. If you're not capable, then you ask for help." But we're all in this boat together, no matter what type of boat it is, rowboat, or yacht, or big fleet ship. We're still on the water together on this earth. And I proceed you and ask you to please consider that when you're looking at the condition of our society today, and you look at all of the problems that we are facing in our political arena, in our job market, in our cost of living. There are families that can barely eat now. So, if we raise the trash level, there won't be any trash because we won't have anything at all to throw away because we won't have anything to begin with. So, I ask you, let's allow our sanitation department to exist. We've got history. If we do away with it, we don't know the variables or the various things that can come out of not having it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. Ms. Brock?
Hi, my name's Megan Brock. I'm going to change gears a little bit. I want to talk about Bridgeway Stadium and why I think Greenville County needs to take emergency action to pause that project. Because based on an ordinance I found, and you can tell me, it was the parking, Article 5 Parking and Loading of the Greenville County Development Ordinance. And in this ordinance, it talks about how before a building, permanent off-street parking space and the amount specified by this article shall be provided at the time of the erection of any building. So, today, I parked in a parking garage. I didn't park at Greenville High School. Hey, guess what? Greenville High School is about the same distance as Malden High School is from where they're building Bridgeway Station. But it's a little far, and you know what? When you build a building, part of what you need to build is parking. So, I'm sure you're all aware that on October 24th, Malden City Council, without any transparency for the public, during a federal emergency in Greenville County, pushed through quietly, behind the closed doors of executive order, at least, they signed an agreement to allow Bridgeway Station to build the stadium. Now, I ran- Now, I read through, I requested through a FOIA request, the lease, I requested the parking plan. I read through the entire 98-page lease and found it very surprising that there was no parking plan. They had 60 days to submit a parking plan in order for the lease to go through. Now, my understanding is this is very important, because they got $10 million from the state legislature, and in order to get that money, they had to push it through by the end of the year. They also got $4 million from Malden City Council. So, they submit this parking plan, top of the parking plan. I have copies, if any of you haven't seen this, I actually sent it in the email to all of you this afternoon. Malden High School, 1,000 spaces. Now, let's point out that the lease specifically says the spaces need to be within a half-hour, a half-mile of the stadium. Malden High School, if you put on a map, the map in the parking plan that they provided specifically says it's not to scale, the spaces are marking in Malden High School are further than half a mile. There might be at most five, right? How can you be allowing a stadium that's going to build, bring potentially 5,000 cars to this very congested area with no parking? Not to mention 385, the ramp already gets backed up. I was driving my father to the airport on Friday, and it was backed up to the interstate. Well, now, 4,000 pedestrians are going to cross the Malden High School pedestrian pathway, and what do you think's going to happen to 385? I don't know if you're aware, but South Carolina is the second most dangerous state to drive in, in the country, and Greenville County is the top fatality county. So, all y'all are not doing your jobs, all right? And what do you think is going to happen when you put 5,000 cars, who have nowhere to park, and you're going to freaking take the Malden High School? You're going to take away from students, from their activities, from their safety, to uphold a plan that doesn't work? This is absolutely ridiculous. You have the jurisdiction to pause this, and it needs to happen right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Ms. Brock, if you'd like to, if you'd like to give her a copy of that.
Thank you. Copies of your own ordinance. Actually, I also mailed it to you. I mailed all of you a Dropbox file that has the full lease and the parking plan. Please reach out to me with any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rumfelt.
Thank you to the council members for hearing me today. It's an honor to come before you all today, my first time. What if I told you all that the biggest threat to public funds isn't just corruption, but it's the leaders that look the other way? I'm here to talk about the fraud, the breaking of state laws, the double taxation, and don't just happen to any family, but it hurts family budgets. I want to talk about the Greater Greenville Sanitation Support Resolution tonight before you. I came across House Bill 4002 and 4003 before anyone noticed and did my research. I found an unbelievable amount of documented reports of misuse of public funds, yearly millage increases, fees on top of those that already pay the millage, going beyond the special purpose district after contracts and services, which is breaking state law. Quickly, I will list a few examples. $22,000 on gives for seven board members in the past decade by the Greenville News Online. They were going to spend $14,000 of your tax money on a three-day retreat to Asheville, but when the Post and Courier came out with the article, they only lost $5,000 because they had to cancel that. You all have a chance to stand up against evidence of mismanagement, not discussing frivolous supposed operational deficiencies, even though it's just a silly resolution to... I am astonished, given the amount of evidence, that a few of you are considering to support this government entity. I am Republican, if you hadn't noticed, and our fundamental principle is to cut taxes and eliminate wasteful spending, and this would do that for 60,000 residents and allow the free market to take over. Campaign season is over, and it's time to start governing? I'm not only speaking to our Republican councilmen, but to others. I ask you, what is more important, freedom of business choice or $2,400 Swiss watch to the board member? Or $2,665 camera lens as a gift? Or how about a $6,572 Rolex watch, which on top of that continues to ask for more millage each year within this government entity? Now, do what is right. Give the folks their liberty back and allow small business owners and a competitive market to flourish, and let residents pick who they choose to do business with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rumfelt. Mr., make sure I say this right. Is it Kean? Kean?
Good evening, members of the council and fellow residents. My name is Brian Kadian, and I am totally blind. I lost my eyesight in the fall of 2020, just after my 50th birthday. As you can imagine, this was a devastating event, and as I adjusted with my journey into the darkness, I found jujitsu. I'm here to talk about and support the Greenville Area Paratransit Program, which allows me safe, friendly, and affordable mode of transportation, so I can stay connected with the jujitsu community and practice the martial art I love so much. The Greenville Area Paratransit Program also allows myself and others like me who cannot drive to have the opportunity to attend work, to make doctor's appointments, and also to complete necessary weekly tasks like grocery shopping. The other, the alternative is using Uber. Unfortunately, my experiences with Uber have included judgment and discrimination. My experiences with Uber have led me to learn that there are drivers that, once they learn that I am blind, they assume that I have a guide dog and will schedule, and will cancel a scheduled ride because they do not want a dog in their car. This is sad, this is unfortunate, and this is also illegal. My costs when I use Uber for my transportation needs throughout the week are $150, and when I'm using the Greenville Area Paratransit Program, they are just $30. This allows me to not sacrifice the medication that I need, food, or shelter. I ask the members of council, that when this topic comes to a vote in the future, that you vote with your heart and with empathy, put yourself in my shoes, in the shoes of others like me that need this program in order not just to survive, but to thrive in Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kean.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Sir, if I may, while we have you here, in case we don't hear from you again, can you explain, are you getting picked up by a special vehicle, or are you using regularly scheduled public transportation?
It's, I believe there's a variety of special vehicles. I don't necessarily need one based on my situation, but they do come in different shapes and forms.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
While you're ready for the next two, I think we were only missing one additional. Is that correct, that we hadn't called out yet? We have three more total. So, Ms. Vandergrift, if you want to get ready, you'll be the third coming up. Next, we have Ms. Crawford.
Thank you for having me again, once again, Greenville County Council. Great to see you all again, working hard. My name is Monta Crawford. For the ones in the audience that don't know who I am, I lived in Greenville County all my life. I live particularly in District 25 at this point, and I'm here to speak... I'm pulled in between. You've got transportation and trash. I mean, which one do I choose? Well, I need y'all to put that money in that transportation, because you all know that I serve the people that are not served, underserved, the people that make that $38,000 a year and can't afford a car. Now, let's talk about the trash. I love y'all. I love y'all. I put out a lot of trash, because what I have to do sometimes is go and gather things, put them together at my house, and get rid of the trash. Now, back in the day, people would bury trash in their backyard. People would burn trash. We have a burn ordinance right now because of the wind. So, you want people burning trash? You want rats on the street? Because I'm going to set my little trash out there, and whatever happened, happened. But what I depend on now is that nice green trash can. So, let's be real, I don't know all the consequences. I haven't looked at your budget, I haven't looked at your proposal, but you talking about taking the trash away from Greenville County? We already have enough trash running on the streets. We don't have enough... I need the force to be enforced to 200, because I need somebody to come down the road and pick up that trash on the side of the road. Everybody likes a clean Greenville. We like our clean streets. We like it that rats don't run across the street when you go to get in your car. We like that. We like that we don't have to see box springs and couches and refrigerators and wood and stuff piled all up. They have their special rules, and Monta, follow the rules. Don't I follow the rules? And when I call them, I don't even have to call them all the time, but when I did have Helena tear my house down, and I had 10 trees I had to have trimmed, and stack them trees up as high as my house, I couldn't even see out my front door. I made a phone call. Greenville Sanitation showed up for me and my family. They showed up. Them little nice green trash cans that we pull out to the curb and we wait on them? I love it. I love it. Now, this is what I'll be willing to pay a penny or two more taxes on, when we talking about taxes, because we need them in our community. This is like shutting down the police department, and I don't know who business is trying to get in and make us pay for private trash pickup, but the people in my community can't afford it. So, guess what? We're going to bring our trash to the other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Ms. Rabe? Is it, R-A-B-E? Is it Rabe? Mr. Rabe?
Hi, my name's Philip Rabe. I'm talking about the Greater Greenville Sanitation Resolution. I do want to talk about fairness as well. I think I could get behind the notion that you pay a little bit more if you maybe have with this millage rate being tied to a home that has more. I think it's a bigger pill to swallow when you're telling a business owner who pays like $32,000 a year on White Horse Road for a service he doesn't get, that he should just accept that, because that's just the way it is. I just don't feel like that's fair. The other thing I wanted to point out is that I did speak to Josh Painter. He owns Kirby Sanitation, a private hauler. He's in District, he's in Greer, I'm not sure District. And I asked him his opinions on this. He said, because I think there's a concern that we're not going to be able to handle all this trash suddenly, and I can guarantee you that if you called the private hauler, once it opened up, they would be able to, they would be happy to pick on new business. They'd be glad to do it. And he, he said, he has no concerns that he and his competitors would be able to step in. His other complaint was, his point was, Greater Greenville is outside of their operating district, in his market, competing against him. He's a private company, and he serves as a travelers' rest area, but he's got a company that's funded by the government competing against him. I don't see how that can be deemed fair, and he doesn't either. So, for those reasons, I feel like we need to look at fairness.
Thank you very much. All right, and lastly, we have Ms. Vandergrift. Did I say it right?
Vandergrift.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the Advent property and this Red Apple Development, okay? My name is Danette Vandergrift. My husband and I have lived on, at 320 Brown Road. I think that's Gary. You're our district. We've lived there for 35 years now, and we've seen a lot of changes on our once quiet and peaceful road and community. Used to be a cow path. So, the back exit road, some of the changes I'm going to list here that we've had to endure. The back exit road onto Brown Road from the Catholic Church, St. Mary Magdalene, that just appeared one day. That was never given a zoning hearing ordinance, that was never talked to us about, it just appeared. All of a sudden, this road was built. And it's also built on a very dangerous curve on Brown Road. If any of you've ever visited Brown Road, it's right there on the curve. The road has increased our traffic flow immensely. Catholic churches have masses several times a day. They have, when they have their holidays, the events, they have several events a year, they have holidays, the traffic is enormous, and they do not like to go out onto Woodruff Road. Makes a lot of sense. Woodruff Road is very busy, and when they have events, they do not allow them to make left-hand turns onto Woodruff Road. They have to make right-hand turns. There are police officers out there, they have to turn right. So, where do they like to come? Onto Brown Road. Brown Road leads to 14 and 5 Forks. So, everybody comes out onto Brown Road, that congests us up. In fact, we can't even get out of our driveways sometimes. Then, the next thing that happened, which, you know, to my friends at Stonehaven, no offense, you know, it had to happen, you know, progress happens. Housing developments, one after one after one took place down towards the end of Brown Road. Used to be hunting fields, now it's housing developments. Soon, we had a drag strip up and down Brown Road, led to our safety of our children riding their bikes, walking dogs, just taking walks. So, we fought very hard to get the speed bumps. We finally got speed bumps placed on the Brown Road, slowed traffic down to some point where at least in between the speed bumps, people had to slow down a little bit. They speed up, but they slowed down. Then, the next event that took place was the back exit for Advent Church. They came along, and they wanted a back exit, too. Catholic Church had one, Advent had to have one. There did appear a zoning sign. It appeared, and it said the zoning meeting would take place in September. All of us, oh my gosh, the time went fast. Okay, well, anyway, the man showed up with the grading company. He showed where they already had a zoning permit signed before even the zoning hearing. And they graded that road, they got their road, and now we have all this traffic coming out of Advent Church. They said they would build a gate, they would keep that gate closed. That gate is open 24/7, so now anybody and everyone comes through the Catholic Church, they come through Advent's driveway 24/7. And now you want to add a charter school with 900 students, that's going to add 500 to 600 to 700 additional cars twice a day, along with South Side Christian School and their traffic on Woodruff Road, and now traffic more on Brown Road to take on all those cars. It's a nightmare. It's a nightmare, and 5 Forks on Woodruff Road, and now on Brown Road, and going through Stonehaven and everywhere else. We can't, we can't take it. The infrastructure's not there. It's not there, and you need to do some research. We have a paper here. There are two schools suing this Red Apple Development right now for what they did to them. They leased the schools to them, and then they upped the cost of the building to the point where the schools can't pay their leases. And we can give you this article from Berkeley County in South Carolina.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vandergrift. Can you share that with us and make sure to get it put in the record? Thank you very much.
Here, you can have this whole thing.
I'm going to pass the, I'm going to pass the, oh, sorry, before we do that, let's move to the next agenda item, make sure that we do not have anything from the administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, just real quick, I wanted to hopefully give my last update on the Helene hurricane cleanup. As of Saturday, March 15th, the county's debris collection is complete. We collected over 1.126 million cubic yards of debris. We are unable to collect additional debris at this time. If you get additional calls for debris collection, please let us know, or explain to the individual that the county is no longer able to provide debris collection, and they will need to contact their trash service to make other arrangements themselves. If they mention burning, please advise to contact the fire departments. There may be locations where debris still exists. If you think the debris pile being reported is old and was just missed, please let us know. If not, please encourage them to contact someone to pick it up for them. Thank you.
Mr., I don't want to say, I don't want to put the administrator on the spot, which I never do. If you want to talk about it next time, I did notice University Ridge Public Facilities Corporation had some activity. Is that something you can talk about now?
Absolutely. It was a public meeting this morning at 11:45. The chairman and myself, the members of the board attended. The Chairman and myself, the members of the Board attended. We basically approved the sale, first sale of some property for this development. It's up on the corner up here. It's for town homes. It was 1.6 acres roughly for, right at $8.8 million. So it was a tremendous sale and the start of something big.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. I'm gonna pass the.
Right quick, Mr. Administrator, I didn't quite hear your number. Did you say 1.126 million yards or cubic yards?
Cubic yards.
Cubic, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Administrator? All right, I'm gonna pass the gavel off to Vice Chair Bradley for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to requests and motions of our council member, 17A Resolution supporting the Greater Greenville Sanitation District. Councilman Blount.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noticed on the council agenda, I would like to introduce a resolution expressing Greenville County Council's support for the Greater Greenville Sanitation District and concern over legislation proposed in the South Carolina General Assembly, which would, if enacted, purport to dissolve the district or otherwise modify its powers in a matter that would have a negative impact on the district's finances and the ability to operate efficiently, and which would have a disproportionate negative impact on the most financially distressed areas of the district and the residents and businesses therein, and which will result in the termination of existing waste collection services to residences and residents and businesses in areas outside the district, and which may result in termination of existing waste collection services to thousands of residents and businesses inside the district and other matters related thereto.
Do we have any questions from the council?
I, I would like to make a statement, I believe, if the Chairman allows, we're gonna open up for council to address this, because it is a pretty timely matter. The reason for this resolution is that the House has already passed these bills, 100%. So it moves on to the Senate, which could take place even this week. There was no conversation between the legislation in Greenville County as to how, what contingency plan we would have in the event that sanitation was dissolved. I don't think that that was a fair way to operate this. If the legislation had issues, I think they should have came to us and at least allowed us to have some kind of idea what was going on. And at the end of the day, when I came on the council two years ago, that was right when recycling was taken away, and we got beat on for months. And it wasn't, it wasn't even a decision that we made. So imagine what's gonna happen when 60,000 residents find out that their service they've had for 38 years is suddenly gonna go away. They're not gonna go to the legislation, they're not gonna go to Columbia, they're gonna come right here and they're gonna be looking at us. And so between that and the fact that almost every person that's ever called me about Greater Greenville Sanitation, they've called to thank us for having that service available, that's why this resolution, resolution's being presented today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Mister, this is Mister McGee.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mister McGee.
Yeah, I'm sorry I can't be there at spring break, but I, I do support this resolution, but I do think at the same time that we need to take a look at, at the operations of, of how this is with the millage and things like that and make it more fair. I have heard those issues. I've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls in both directions for this, for this legislation that the state is passing. And I'll support this resolution tonight, but no, for everybody in the crowd and even the fellow council members, I do intend to work closely with the state legislative delegation to make sure that they get it right and the reform that is, that is needed, and we, we can do that and we can support that, that, that reform. Also, you know, in, in the light of transparency, and I'm not going to call out anybody at this meeting or anybody in the state legislature, but we have to look at the people involved with this. And there are some people in the state legislative delegation and the state legislator that are, that are involved with this, one of the private companies. And I think that that's, you know, the public needs to be aware of that, and when we're making these kind of decisions, to know why the state legislative, legislature is pushing through some nuances. That's all, thank you.
Dr. Phat?
I want to go last. Ask if somebody else's got something they want to. I did, I, Mr. Chairman, if I'm up. I will unfortunately have to not support this. One of the issues is that there are actually two bills in the legislature. First of all, it's not, it's, it's the legislature started this, it's a state issue. After that, there are two parallel bills. So a lot of the comments were focused on this sanitation going away. The other bill says absolutely not. It's just modifications to get it back to its original purpose in its own district. So that's why I think the resolution is very broad and it just basically is, is saying we support, you know, you can read the language, but it's saying we support anything the district does, and I just can't do that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mister, um, Mister Mitchell.
Captain Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think everybody needs to know that Councilman Blount and I, along with Councilman Phat, have a lot of resonance with the services of Greenville Sanitation. I felt blindsided by the state of South Carolina when they introduced this legislation and they didn't say anything to us. We had a delegation meeting right here in this room, the state delegates. I talked to those delegates that same evening. No one said anything. I was at a SCAC conference in Columbia. No one had said anything all during the day. That evening, I found out that this legislation had passed through the House. And then it was going to be gone on, taken on to the Senate. It made no sense. So I had some harsh words with some of those state representatives, and I'll have some more harsh words with them. My thing is, how do you come into my backyard and tell me what you are going to do with my people without saying anything to me? Makes absolutely no sense, and this is not the end of it. Thank you.
I feel, I would like to make a few comments myself. Who initiated the bill at least is a conflict interest. Greenville County citizens had no input. I've been on council two years, being my third. I have yet to have a negative comment from the citizens about Greenville Sanitation. If they already comment, they want their service, and they get their service by this council. They've not been solicited by Greenville Sanitation. Mama told me, if it wasn't broke, don't fix it. Dr. Phat?
Thank, thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to share a few comments, but I do, and I'll share what some of you have said, particularly Chairman Blount and Representative, Mr. Allen Mitchell. It's interesting that none of the representatives in the Greenville delegation that are pushing for this change have any constituents that live in districts 19, 23, or 25. So you worried about my district with no comment, no nothing. Bruce Wilson's correct, 60% of Greater Greenville Sanitation geographical area is in District 25. And nobody from that legislative delegation who grins and how you doing, and that one that always says Merry Christmas, I'm done. Don't Merry Christmas me again. They didn't call for any discussion. I have not gotten one phone call, not one, from a constituent saying that they don't like Greater Greenville Sanitation and want it dissolved. Not one. But I've received multiple calls, worrying themselves to death that they may lose a service that they've had for 50 years that they like. I agree. And I've told Steve Cole this, I agree, that Greater Greenville Sanitation should not operate outside of the district and compete unfairly with private, with the private sector. I've told Bruce Bannister that, I've told Steve Cole that, and we all can agree that they need to operate with inside the district. Now let's talk two major problems with this legislation and the devastating impact that it'll have on residents and the district. One, private companies only pick up garbage, while Greater Greenville picks up debris, solid waste, and everything else, which we enjoy and like. Let me talk District 25 specifically. Greenville County has a 60/40 homeownership rental ratio. In District 25, it's just the opposite. It is reversed. 60% renters, 40% homeownership. 24 out of 100 people who rent have eviction notices filed on them every month. Now, all of them don't go through, but the ones that do end up leaving couches, TVs, old beds on the side of the road when they leave that Greater Greenville comes and picks up, that the private people companies will not. And we always talk about transparency and saving taxpayers' money. If they don't take them with them, if we have a private pickup and this debris is left on the side of the road, the landlords have to pick it up and take it to the convenience centers, which adds an additional impact and cause greater burden on the county of Greenville and the administrator that's sitting right there because they won't go to the landfill. Let's talk about their fee structure. Yes, it's based on property values. I am vehemently opposed to a flat fee funding structure. A flat fee is a regressive tax that works a disproportionate hardship on the lower-income residents, particularly our senior citizens that are on a fixed income. Speaking of hurting, you keep talking about hurting the private companies. Really? That's our conversation? You're talking about hurting private for-profit companies. I've heard nobody from our illustrious Greenville delegation speak with any concern about the 114 employees that would be without a job, many of which reside in my district. These employees do something I have never heard of. When people are disabled, Mister Tripp, they get out of the truck and go up to the door and pick up the people's trash. That is unheard of. Mister Collins, you and I joke every week that I don't call you and I don't email you.
Hello, Dr. Phat.
And, and we good, we still good. But I want you to know this, and I want the legislative delegation to know this, I do not need any help from the outside members of the delegation to helping me determine what's in the best interest for my constituents. And I want these council members to understand this, that we handle Greater Greenville Sanitation's millage, we handle their bond issues, we handle the appointment of commissioners, not the delegation. So, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we send this to committee, but I would strongly hope that the members of this body recognize we put the people first, not-for-profit businesses, and support this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, it's been a couple of years since I've heard a stem-winder's speech like that.
I, I came out, I came out of retirement, man.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to. Thank you, Mister Phat, I appreciate that. You know, we try to say, well, the, the state don't ask us. The state does a lot of stuff they don't ask you, they don't care what you say, that's just how it is. It's a different legislative body. They're gonna mandate things that the county does, like the DSS courts and spaces that we have to provide for the state that county has to pay for. Okay? Not to say that it's equivalent to, but it's the point that the state will not come in and ask you what you think about this Greenville County, just like DHEC doesn't ask you, what do you think about all these waterways that you gotta protect and this and the other? They mandate that to you. That said, private enterprise is not a failure in this area. I have three family companies in my area that have been in the business for 75 years, and those are the people I represent, Mister Phat. Okay? So I can give you the same address and the same emotion, because there's a lot of emotion in this, as we've witnessed and that you hear now. But at the same time, if it goes to committee, let's talk about it. But as it is right now, I'm a no.
Any other councilors?
Mr. Chairman, we, we could technically take a vote on this tonight, but I want to make a request, being the one submitting this, based on several things. Number one, for people like Mister Davis who have said that they don't want to see sanitation go away, they want to see it change. Unfortunately, the legislation presented so far doesn't necessarily allow for that change before they have a chance to just wipe it off the face of the earth. So what I'm hopeful for is without even having to vote, the legislation will do the right thing and get us back where we need to be. So having said that, what I would like to do.
But Mister, I, I don't want to interrupt you. I just, I disagree with that characterization. There are two bills, they do two different things. One, all along, it's been one, and I have nothing to do with them, but just to be point of information, one of them is to keep it in its district. I have nothing to do with this, man.
Are they both on the Senate floor currently, together?
Excuse me?
Are they both on the Senate floor together currently?
I would assume so, I don't know.
So they could be voted on at the same time?
Do you know, what's the current posture of the legislation?
It's in the Senate, they're gonna be voted on.
They're, they've been in the House, they're both in the Senate, so my point is that if they, they're not gonna just vote on one and then magically not vote on the other.
Well, I, I think the point is that there has always been, the legislature has set forth two pathways. There's two roads on this. So it's not all about the legislature trying to take this sanitation district away. One is to change and keep it in the district that it was intended for, the other is to make it go away. So those are two different paths. I'm just making that point of information.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. And that, and that goes to another point, to, to go off the back of what Mister Davis said. The reason I want to make this request is so that we can have time to let the process hopefully work out in a positive way rather than a negative one that impacts all of Greenville County. So I would request that this resolution be referred to the Communications and Government Affairs Committee, so we could have further discussion and maybe even possibly with some of the legislation. Mr. Chairman.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that request? Could it possibly be a joint committee, Communication and Public Works and, or Communications and Government Affairs and Public Works?
Would you suggest possibly then send it to committee of the whole, I mean, just include council? I'm, I'm good with that. My goal with this resolution is to get eyeballs on it so our citizens aren't caught out of left field, and so citizens who are passionate about the service they receive can have a moment to speak.
I think that's a great, this is so politically charged and it affects so many people and everybody has such a strong opinion, I think it'd probably be best if we sent it to committee of the whole.
Can I get a vote from the council to send this to committee of the whole?
We don't need it.
You can just refer.
Chairman can do it.
You can do it, you're chairman.
You can just do it.
I'll, I'll say the same.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
Just keep in mind one thing is that is that the state legislature started this, they can take action while we're studying it, and we can't do anything about it. So, yes, I support us doing something in the committee, but for the citizens, you need to understand that we don't have control right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one more thing?
Yes, sir, Mister Tripp.
Having served in that august body, I, I would go back to something that Mister Bruce, I forget your name, your last name, about talking to legislators, talking one-on-one privately, trying to figure out what's going on here, I think is gonna be a lot more positive than, you know, beating our chest. Trash business, it's a dirty business. And, and I just, I just tell you that it's gonna be more important that we work on our relationships with the legislature and try to figure out what's going on, because there may be something to this. Mister Chorbasian, I mean, I'm persuaded when you say the things that you do, and Mister Davis and, you know, but I hear the great stories from the community. I think there's a yin and yang to this, this, this problem that we have in front of us, but, you know, fundamentally, I think we have a lack of fairness in the pricing structure of this. Fundamentally, I think it's unfair for GGR, Greenville, Greater Greenville Sanitation Department to be able to go outside their boundaries and compete with private enterprise when they can do a $20 million bond referendum that we approved, and then turn around and, and, you know, spend three, four, five million dollars on equipment with almost no discussion. I, I think where there's smoke, there's potentially fire. And so I think it, it takes our body, and I think it takes the state legislature working together to ferret out the problems and try to solve problems. So I, I'd say let's send it to committee, but let's also have some conversations, and I'll be part of that.
We'll send this to committee of the whole. I'll pass the gavel back to Chairman Blount.
Thank you. And before we have the last motion, I want to thank everybody again for coming. When you- When you come and you speak to us and we can see your face, it means a lot more than an email or anything else we could ever get. So thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain one final motion.
Motion, George.
Favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Have a good evening, everybody.